How you doing?
Yeah, good. Yep. Still doing the rec stuff up there.
She is, yeah.
She's doing the general assistant stuff too for them.
She's still down with interesting too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I keep her working seven days a week.
I think you do, yeah.
Keeps me out of trouble.
He's not you.
Nobody is me either.
I reserve that for...
Yeah.
We have to stop gossiping now? And try it again.
It's only gonna work for two or three minutes.
Oh, no, she's...
She's fixed it out, but how can it not go wrong?
I thought you said she fixed it.
I did, but...
What's the batteries?
No.
Do you need to go get batteries?
You know what, people? No. Just stop. Stop right now.
I'm at the point where I just don't want to just plug in all the time. Like they have Bluetooth and batteries and I don't have the long. That's what comes with that.
You know?
It was, it was picking it up from over there, though.
I'm just gonna leave it there because it's picking it up. I just put up the volume.
But you know, you just say it's...
It seems like it's been here already. I know. Yeah, you were gonna sit with a rough crowd over there.
I know. Took my seat.
That's sad. I'm going to open the public hearing. Adult-use marijuana store license application for Thompson Lake Caregiving DVA TLCs, The Hideaway Renewal Application. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Adam?
Just wanted to make one quick clarification. In the application, there was a clariflier of 483 Main Street as the location, but the actual location is 1190, which is the correct location. It was just a mistake that was caught after the packets were made. So that's been corrected on the one that you're gonna sign, and the inspections were all done at the correct location of 1190. Just was a clariflier.
Does anyone, selectmen or anyone in the public, have any questions or comments?
Did you go over this?
I did.
Everything's good?
Yeah, I went and did the inspection and everything was fine.
If there are no questions or comments, then we will close the public hearing. And we will go right into the selectmen's meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll have the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under one indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Action on the minutes, item number two.
The rule, second.
All those in favor? opposed? Thank you. Item three, adjustments to the agenda.
I have nothing, ma'am.
Thank you. Number four, public comments. Please state your name and the town that you are from for the record if you would like to speak. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak? Number five, business items. Five point one, adult-use marijuana store license application for Thompson Lake Caregiving DVA DLCs, The Hideaway Renewal Application.
The rule, second.
Discussion, all those in favor? opposed? Thank you. Five point two, selectmen's discussion with Heather Manchester, MSAD 17 Superintendent. Hi.
Hi, I'm Heather. Nice to meet you. Thanks for inviting me tonight.
Thank you.
I did prepare a handout because I wasn't sure how you wanted to structure this, if you wanted to ask me questions or if you wanted me to do a little talk. So I'll let you sort of lead what you'd like. But yeah, I'm Heather and I'm the superintendent.
Thank you.
So I think, I think the board of selectmen just had questions. The handout is great, but I think there was some questions, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it was Floyd that was asking about notification policies for parents and so forth. Was that you?
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing is, guys had a little excitement up there about a month ago.
We did. We've had quite a bit of excitement, yes.
With an individual coming in with a knife and a backpack and coming in when he's about 32 years old compared to high school kids. And then you had a little excitement about the next day with somebody trying to run at him.
It was a busy couple of days.
Yes.
Yes.
And what I heard and everything else is that a lot of people didn't get notified, especially the teachers, didn't know what was taking place until after the fact, instead of being warned why it was happening.
Yeah.
And I understand their concerns, and that's why I felt I'd like to know what the policy is, what's gonna be taking place.
Yeah, so I think, I think there's a couple of things you should know about that. So the incidents with the gentleman who was in school, we didn't notify teachers because literally as soon as we knew he was there, we got him out of the building. And so then, and then things were revealed later on in the day that were very concerning. That's when we sent a notification out. And actually, the principal, who's Mr. Rickford, who's new, who's doing a great job, he was remiss in not sending something out to parents that night. He sent it out the next morning, which caused probably more hassle than it should have.
But as you know, the kids can, it can travel quickly with kids like this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, so I will tell you, we had no idea that there was anything wrong with the gentleman. We, he had come in to visit a teacher, actually, and visited two teachers. And then as soon as the school resource officer saw he was there, escorted him out. And then we learned some other things as the day went on and dealt with that. So the good news is, one, everyone was okay, thank goodness, because that would have been terrible. And then the other piece is, because we do have so many new staff, and we have, we have two new administrators out of three. I'm new, the assistant superintendent's new, et cetera. We actually were able to take a closer look at some of our practices and procedures for policy for safety, which, which actually, if you look on here, is part of our strategic plan, is to update all of our safety practices. So that following Tuesday, because it was Martin Luther King Day weekend, I actually met with the high school emergency team. We met for several hours, going through bit by bit what happened, putting plans in action. So I'm excited to report that because of that incident, we were able actually to look at some of the things we're doing and put some things into place immediately, such as badges, remind staff. Remember, we've had COVID, so things have, some of the practices that we've had, I think we just need to dust them off and do the things that we always did. So for example, if a teacher, if someone comes to visit a teacher, the teacher knows they have to escort them out if they don't have a badge, if they haven't signed in. So we've got some of those practices. Our teachers are all wearing their badges, for example. And then we've also clarified communication with how that happens. And we also let teachers know sometimes you won't know about things until the end of the day. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So there, there is some of that piece as well. And then the next day, we had a threat from outside, which was pretty scary to us. And we also knew that the person wasn't near. So we did put the school into working lockdown. And working lockdown means everyone just keep working, we're safe, but we need people to stay in place. We often use those for things like medical emergencies, like if a student was having a seizure, for example. Or believe it or not, sometimes kids come to school intoxicated and we need to get them out. So we would often use that as a way to just protect student privacy and things like that. So we did put the school into a working lockdown. I think tensions were really high because of the date before.
Yeah. Well, that's, you know, some of the concerns and...
Yeah.
And I have the concerns too, because I have two grand dogs.
I know. I think I know my grandchildren, actually. Yeah, good kids. Yeah.
Adam, do you have any questions? Scott?
I'm, I'm just assuming that the review of those policies, because even before or after that, you had a small fire in the cafe.
We also reviewed that as part of our policies, and we will be pulling fire alarms moving forward.
Because I happen to be responding to that call and they came across and said that the school was not evacuating and we were on like...
We've had conversations about that, yeah.
Oh, I need to say that, because I just, if, if nothing else...
Yeah.
It doesn't set the, is, because what you're doing by, by not doing that is you're going like, we don't have to pay attention to you. It's, it's, yeah, it's hard enough to get the students out now as it is, but when there's a real fire, it's around time to be...
I'm in total agreement.
So, thank you.
So the question that I will ask is, the high school and the middle school, why is it that lockers are no longer being used by the students? And as superintendent, since you have taught, maybe you can tell me what the rationale is that students no longer have use of lockers?
I guess I did not realize that that was in place.
Well, I have, I have a grandchild at both the high school and the middle school, so that's how I know that they don't have lockers. And it creates a situation where they're carrying all of their heavy, heavy gear, everything around all day long. And kids don't bring jackets, heavy jackets, because they don't want to carry them.
I can't, you know, I didn't know that that was in practice, so I'd have to look into that and get back to you, because I honestly don't know.
Okay, so that's one. And then the other is at the high school, I've been told that only one bathroom is available for use. So if you're at one end of the high school and you have to, a student has to go to the bathroom, is on the end, on the other end, then there's virtually not a lot of time to get there. And I've been told the reason why there's only one bathroom, because of what's going on in the bathrooms. So why would only one bathroom be available for a school that's that?
So my understanding is that we do have more than one bathroom available to students, but we do have to monitor them very carefully because we've had some exceptionally bad behavior by students in those bathrooms. And we're looking at some measures that would support better behavior in the bathrooms while still honoring, honoring student privacy, such as vape detectors and things like that. So my understanding is that there are bathrooms available. Some of the smaller ones, maybe odd in the outer wings, may be closed because those would often be places for kids to go and get up to no good.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you want to talk about anything on your last night?
Well, you know, I just thought, since I had the opportunity, I talked to you a little bit about just some of our goals. I mean, those of you who have met me before know that this is kind of new for me. I was put into place last year in a very bizarre situation, I guess I could say. And, you know, I thank the community for the support and have just been glad to step up and serve the community. One of the things the school board did last year, and actually pre-COVID, was we developed some strategic pillars that we thought would guide all of our work in SAT 17. So four of them, healthy and resilient students, maximize facilities to support learning, recruit and grow talent, and rigorous, relevant, and responsive learning. So those four pillars have guided all of the work I've done since being put in this position. And it's actually been a really helpful tool for me to kind of categorize our priorities. So if you have a look at healthy and resilient students, and I'm sure many of you, if you have grandchildren, children, you know that the pandemic has been very hard on our students and their families. And mental health of our students is a concern. We have lots of anxiety and depression. We have lots of dysregulated behaviors in our schools. Actually, with our little ones especially, we're, we're finding our primary grade children, we've got some kids who are really struggling to stay in school. So a couple of things we're doing to support our students is something called PBIS, or Positive Behavior and Intervention Support. If you have kids at Oxford Elementary, you may have heard some of the things that they're doing there. But basically, it's this idea of teaching behavior and expectations in our school implicitly, explicitly rather, all throughout the school. So this is how you behave in the bus, this is how you behave in the cafeteria, this is how you behave when you're walking through the hallways. Because we have to remind students how to do that. So every school in the district has school-wide expectations. And what they're trying to do is acknowledge when students actually behave well and then also to have appropriate consequences when they're not, because that's an important part of things. And we've got that from everywhere to K-12. Because as you can imagine, cafeteria and hallways, especially for our adolescent students, is often where things happen. So between classes and in the generally sort of unsupervised areas. So we're really trying to focus on that to clean up some behavior. We're also trying to work on social emotional learning. A lot of our kids are just regulated during the school day. So working on things like self-regulation. So if you're feeling really upset and angry, how, what strategies can you use to calm yourself down so you don't get to the point where you get kicked out of class or you hurt somebody else? So it's really trying to get kids to really think about how they're behaving and how they relate to other people. So working on self-regulation, self-awareness, you know, how are you treating others in your classroom or in the school? I'm trying to support that. And then we're trying to improve attendance, because our attendance during the pandemic really suffered. We've seen a good uptick this year because we have no quarantining and all that sort of stuff. But we have a lot of kids who are chronically absent, so we want to get those kids to school. In terms of our facilities, we're really excited and, you know, we have a lot of work to do. We have two building projects coming up. One is Oxford Hills Middle School, which many of you probably attended that school. It's, it's time for an overhaul of that. And then we also have the Agnes Gray Building Project. That school's over 100 years old. So it's, it's also time for an upgrade. We're also exploring solutions to reducing the cost of energy. I'm sure you know this, as a town, the cost of oil and, and all of those things has gone up pretty significantly and it fluctuates a lot. So we're looking into some other options, such as solar, using electricity and that, that sort of thing. There's lots of federal monies available for school districts to build some infrastructure, so we're exploring those projects. And then as I talked to you before, part of our work this year anyway, my new assistant superintendent, Steve Shabronowitz, I've sort of tasked him with looking at all of our safety procedures in all of our schools. We're rewriting all of our emergency plans, the district emergency plan. We're looking at what are some of the things we need to put in the budget for security, such as cameras, you know, supports for classrooms, those kinds of things. The next one is recruiting and growing talent. If you own a business, you know sometimes it's really hard to find staff. It's really hard to fund staff for our schools and, and to keep them here, because there's always, especially for support staff, there's always a job that pays better. So we're really looking at that, trying to establish structures to grow our own talent. So for example, if we have an ed tech who looks promising and would like to be a teacher, we're gonna support them with the coursework to, to get them into the classroom. We also want to, you know, grow our own bus drivers. Like if people want to be a bus driver, they're a custodian, they want to be a bus driver, we will train them to do those kinds, kinds of things. We're also trying to work on our salary to make it a little bit more competitive in today's market, because we still have people making $15 or $16 an hour. And it's really hard to compete with Walmart, actually, so. And, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. And then obviously, we want to support our staff so that they stay here and continue to teach in the Oxford Hills. We think we have great staff and we think they do a great job. So we want to make them feel like, that they're valued and they want to stay. And then we also want to support the, lots of new staff. We had about 80 new teachers and support staff last summer. So that was a lot of people to, to onboard. We've had lots of retirements, we've had lots of people post-COVID say, "I'm out, I need a break, need to do something else." And we've also had people going to southern, southern communities where they can work, make more money. They can make about $15,000, $20,000 more if they go on the coast. And they have a staff shortage now down in southern Maine, so they're taking teachers in a way that they probably wouldn't have years past. And then finally, obviously, why we're at school is learning. We want to make learning better for kids. So one of our big goals is to improve math instruction for, for all of our students. We have, our literacy scores have been slowly rising for, for years now, and math has been sort of flat, so we have a renewed emphasis on math. We're also looking to expand our experiential learning opportunities for kids. So one of the blessings of COVID, if I could say that, is we took our kids outside a lot during that time. So we got them outside, doing a lot of hands-on learning outside, and we want to keep that going. It's been one of the things that's been really good. And our students report that they love to learn outside. So we have a grant-funded position at Robert's Farm. We have a STEM teacher up there, and all of our fifth graders go once a month to Robert's Farm. They love it, it's fantastic. And we want to expand those opportunities for other kids as well. We also got a rev grant, the Agnes Gray School in West Paris got a rev grant, which, like, something about innovative practices. I can't remember what rev stands for. But we were able to hire for two years an outdoor learning coordinator. She worked at Agnes Gray last year and now she works for the district. So she's going around to different schools to help teachers bring their learning outside. In fact, I was talking to a fourth grade teacher today who was describing how she went outside, as an Oxford teacher, actually. I interviewed her for, working on my dissertation, so I interviewed her. She was talking about how she went outside and used the local features of behind Oxford Elementary School to map out her own community. And so they were outside plotting out their section of the land and where, you know, what the natural landmarks were and things like that. So it was just an applied way to do geography. And she said her kids had a really good time doing that, and they'll probably likely to remember that more than they would otherwise. So that's really exciting. And then obviously, we have kids along the range of the spectrum. So we've got, we've got kids who struggle and then we've got kids who excel. So we've really got to figure out what those interventions and supports are for those students who aren't quite yet at benchmark. And then also, we have some kids who are ready to fly. So how can we do better with those students? Because I think that's a population we've, we've struggled to support in the best way possible. So those are just some of the things we're working on. And, you know, I think we've got wonderful people that we work for. Our teachers are working really hard, our administrators are working hard. I can't say enough about the Oxford Elementary staff, just because this is your hometown. Tiffany and Denise, where the administrators there are fantastic. The school culture is really positive. I hear wonderful reports from parents. And I love going into the classrooms because they have some really excellent teachers there. So we've got a lot of really good things going on. And we've got some challenges that we need to, to keep working on. So I don't know if there's anything else you guys would like to ask or know about?
I do have a fifth grader at Oxford, Dr. Eri, who went to Robert's Farm today and also last month, and actually, he just loves that.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
So that is a big program.
Yeah, fantastic.
Have them all over the place. If there's nothing else, then we thank you for coming, taking the time for coming and, and talking with us.
Yeah, thank you for your time. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions or concerns, you know. I don't know, Adam and I have each other's cell phones and, you know, you can certainly call me at the office if you need to, okay?
Thank you.
And I'm gonna scoot, I'd love to stay, but, you know.
I'd like to ask you a few more on this, could you take my number? My number is 5W, L W U. My number is area code 71, 351, 2562.
Item 5.3, selectmen's discussion regarding the number of active marijuana business licenses.
So for the board, I have, we did update that print-off that you have in there with them listed. It's one for each of you. Just wanted to clarify a few things and so forth. So you'll see there's, there's 10 listed, but there's only eight that are still active on there. So I also provided you with a copy of the marijuana licensing ordinance for reference for the discussion, so.
So we have, let me see. One medical store is no longer there and one cultivation facility. So right now, it looks like we have two medical stores, is that correct? Two medical stores and one adult marijuana store.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So the adult marijuana store is different than the medical store, is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. And then under the cultivation facility, there is one that is a two-tier, the other one, tier two, the other, there are two that are tier three. Is, and then there's another one listed as medical cultivation facility. Are those three all similar with just differences that put them in the tier two, three, and no tier?
The tier, the tiers are based on canopy size, if I remember correctly?
Yeah.
And, you know, basically, you know, how many plants that they have. That's how the tiers fall on the flight. Do you have specific definitions, if you'd like, I can pull that out.
No, that's good, I just, I just, and there's one manufacturing facility, according to this.
Yes.
Okay. That's the information I was looking for on all of them, their, their valuations, the taxes that they pay when they expire.
I mean, one comment, when you mentioned about the taxes that I would make, and is that these buildings, from my observation, and I think the code enforcement, and maybe even the police chief would observe the same thing, these buildings certainly have had significant improvements made to them by these, by these businesses. So I think that's a positive thing, and not only because it's good for the blighted buildings, if you will, but it's good for our tax revenues too, so.
Well, I think, I think that is a positive, that all of the ones that I do see in these locations, they're in really good condition. I mean, they're not falling down in sort of the eye. Are there questions that any selectmen have with regard to this? Okay, this was, this is what I was looking for, so.
Okay. So I think the only other thing, if I may, is that I think this was stemming from that discussion of, you know, whether or not we wanted to consider a cap too, so.
Do you know, in the ordinance, is there a, I know there's a minimum number of footage from like a residence or a church or a school. Is there a minimum number between facilities? I don't remember there being one.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. I'd have to double check, but I don't believe so.
Because I recall that...
Used to be.
There was a, there was a, at the beginning of the, yeah.
But not anymore.
Don't quote me on this.
So that was, that was the old medical marijuana.
But I, I think the ordinance changed it so that they could be more clustered together.
Right.
It used to be like 400 feet between door, between, between them or something to that.
That was the discussion we had with the door-to-door thing.
Door-to-door.
Yeah.
And that came in too, is when they were looking at Rupa's building, building in the end, the door to the church up in there. That's what they were trying to figure limitations on that, that never materialized.
So I guess the only question I would have in looking at this, were, was the discussion to limit everything in its entirety, have a cap on all of these, or a cap on individual categories? June, I guess I would ask you that question because you brought the information in.
Yes.
What you were looking at doing, were you looking at capping everything, no matter what it was categorized at, or just capping each category?
Well, initially, it was just about retail. I did not realize that the breakdown would be this way. So you're basically saying there are only three stores and everything else is either grow or cultivation.
There are two medical stores.
Two medical stores and one retail.
And there is one adult marijuana store.
Yes, you have to have a card on medical, no card on the retail, on the adult marijuana store. So there's only three stores.
Right.
So everything else...
Has to do with cultivation, manufacturing.
Well, that actually helps me a lot, because I thought that everything I saw was a store.
Okay.
So if you're, if there's only three stores, that's, I guess in my mind, more reasonable for a town of our size. When I was thinking we had 10, eight to 10 stores, that felt like that was an awful lot.
Okay.
So...
That's why I felt we needed to see this broken down by categories to show exactly what we're looking at.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've been mulling it over the last several weeks and I, you know, probably wasn't here when I came the first time, but maybe it was the second time. And, you know, I, I was weighing up his comments about, you know, not wanting to limit because, you know, it's, you put a limit on one... because, you know, it's, you put a limit on one type of business, and, you know, and the market should determine it, obviously, you know.
If you look at this...
Twenty-five of the same store, they're probably all not going to do very well.
The only thing about it is, you can see the two stores are already, because of the competition.
And if I may, the, the market is actually struggling a lot, it's very flooded, the state as a whole didn't cap the amount of cultivation facilities, so prices dropped, people couldn't compete, there's a lot of that happening. We're gonna lose about eighty percent of the medical market here in the next nine months.
I know, talking to my brother-in-law, they've already closed, what, five, six of them, some of them.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, like I said, as I've been mulling it over myself, just, you know, my perspective just was that I did not want Route twenty-six to become known for only having marijuana stores and no other businesses, because it was beginning to feel that way. And does that number include the new ones that the planning board just put through, that eight, that number eight, like, there's one that was just approved the other week? It's gonna be a new build, it's gonna be a trailer building in front of Walmart?
This is the, this only...
That's gonna be a retail.
Yeah, this only includes ones that the board has, the board of selectmen have approved, so if it hasn't gotten here yet, it's not on there.
Yeah, so I think there's, the planning board, I think, approved, definitely one, maybe two others, and I'm not sure. I know one is definitely a retail, because that's the one that they're putting a building in front of Walmart, and, I'm not sure. It's a car, you said? I, it doesn't matter if it's a car or, or a retail one, I guess it's just, yeah. So, yeah, I, I don't know that it's worth pursuing, putting a cap, you know, especially if we're hearing that the industry is flooded, and so it's probably not going to just turn into, you know, twenty-five stores between here and Norway.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah.
Okay.
So I appreciate you guys, though, taking, taking it to account and just, you know, figuring it out.
Do you have one of these, June?
No.
Okay, Adam, hold that one, too.
Yeah, I've got the ordinance, but...
And then, that way you can see it yourself.
I just find, I find it interesting, though, then, that the cultivation and the medical ones are actually advertising, so is that like a canvas, that's just a...
That's just a grow store at this point.
That's just a grow store, so people don't walk in there and buy.
It was a medical store, but they shut it down.
Okay.
We got twenty-five.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, so I just found that interesting, I realized that they advertised, that they were only growing, and I thought that that meant it was open to the public type store. And I agree that every facility I seed is immaculate and low-kept, you know, I'm just not a huge fan of nineteen green flags in front of every store, but, I mean, we talked about that anyway, so.
Thank you, thanks, June. Okay, the next item on the agenda, department head reports, six point one, payroll layered recreation, an update, please.
Center stage.
Love that.
Center stage.
Always. So just an update on summer recs, we did open up registrations, we have about fifty-two kids that have already signed up, all but nine are from Oxford. We have found at least one swim instructor with potential for a second one, so that's pretty exciting, we've been looking into field trips. I almost have the full eight-week calendar done, very close, filling in a few more blanks. Do you guys have any questions on rec, and there were two?
I just wanted to say an update as to where you were now, with going out to get information from where you were when you came before.
Yeah, no, it's, we are getting really great feedback, a lot of people are really interested, I've had a lot of people asking for applications, so we haven't started that process yet, but the interest is definitely there, people are starting to put down their deposits, I've had a few families that have already paid in full, so, it's going pretty good, and I think it's, I mean, to be in February and have over fifty kids, that's really good, so.
Call me.
When is your deadline?
I haven't really set that deadline yet, I know that as we get closer to summer, that's when we're gonna get a lot of our kids. But I will be putting out some number list of how many kids we anticipate to have in each group, so it's really kind of like a first come, first served basis, you know, for our younger kids, we'll probably cap it at about forty kids, so...
Remember, your goal was what, a hundred?
I don't have a goal, I'd love to hit a hundred, and I think we will, easily.
Yeah, or, or plan a hundred.
Yes, the plan is a hundred, and I think, I think we will easily hit that.
You do.
As we hit fifty kids within no time at all, really, and I've been getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions, and I know they're waiting for this calendar right here to roll out, so it's a very close to being, to being done, so.
Excellent.
Are you planning on using the Potter Road Fields for anything at all?
I would love to.
Outhouses, finish.
Oh, come on.
I mean, another six months, and it will be, take longer than we did to do that field down in Pismo, so.
Yeah.
That was four years, so.
Okay.
I think we should be able to finish an outhouse if I find somebody.
The bathroom is definitely a goal of mine, I'd love to see that done. I'd love to see that baseball field get used, because we do have some Bay Brute teams, that's a beautiful field that clearly has not been used in many, many years, so if we could get that, what was that?
That's what it was originally built for.
Was Bay Brute?
Yes.
Yeah, it's Bay Brute size.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful field, really, great dugouts and everything, so, yes, I definitely would love to see Potter Road getting used, I've been kind of drafting up some designs for a new sign, so people actually know where the fields are, I know that's one thing, is people are like, where's Potter Road, there's a field there, before I worked over here, a lot of times I just drove right past it, because that little sign doesn't really do much, so...
Remember, we talked about trying to see if we could clear away back in so people could see it.
Yeah.
Cut the trees and everything else there.
Yeah, we did have the, the high school brought some students over, and they've actually been cutting back a bunch of the trees when you drive in, it's so narrow, my husband, we went for soccer one day, and he's got a big truck, he thinks this is terrible, we gotta cut back these trees, so they came in, they cleared out a bunch of stuff, for, you know, thinking about maybe even putting in just a second road, because it is so narrow, and just helping with that flow of traffic, so.
But how wide, we don't have, just put that wide out front, right?
Right, yeah, we just looked at the, the plan, but to your point, though, about clearing back trees and stuff, the forestry program from the high school approached me and was looking for a project, so.
Wow.
That seemed like a...
I think we were just here last week, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they cut back some trees for us, which was great.
Maybe they have building crews that wants to, want to work on a outhouse, bathroom, kind of. How much, is your money still set there to do that? I think we're getting it on quick.
Well, we, we put that out to bid about eighteen months ago, I think it was, and the bids we got back were a hundred thousand dollars to finish it, so we were a little afraid when it came to that, but maybe if we put it out to bid again now, that things are less chaotic, maybe we can, more better.
Would you agree?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'd agree. I know that we had talked to a couple plumbers about coming and looking at it, I know there was one that was approached last year, and he didn't think there was any water, but there is, there is a setup down there, so he said that was actually better than he expected, so I'm hoping that, you know, once the forms up, it's a little bit nicer, we can get in there and have him look at it, and then see what we need to do to finish it up in there.
This will be money put to water.
ADA money, yeah?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, great job.
Thanks.
Town managers, are there any other department heads? Okay, town managers report, an update.
All right, thank you, Caleb. So I was asked by one of the selectmen the other day, so I just printed off and brought it in reference to casino revenues year-to-date, fiscal year, year-to-date, so I went ahead, finance director prepared for us a printout of that. So, casino revenues year-to-date are one point two million, is what we've taken in thus far this year, so we're just over halfway through the fiscal year, just, so that's pretty exciting. One-eighty Tiger Hill Road, I wanted to pass along that that was foreclosed property, we closed on that earlier today, finally, we got everything squared away there, attorneys did what attorneys do, and just, I advise that I would just close that once we were closed, the sale price was seventy-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars to Dan and Roberta O'Neil, so we've got that taken care of. Eighty-five Pleasant Street is, we're scheduled to close on that on Friday, February twenty-fourth, and the sewer pump station that was over there is actually looking like it's gonna be one hundred percent squared away next week before the closing, so we're really excited about that, because we're gonna have to get an access agreement and all that stuff, but it looks like we're not going to have to do that. I also wanted to pass along that the public safety building, if you haven't heard, Scott might know a little something about this, we had a pretty significant water leak over there with some of the plumbing, that however, you know, we've been working with the, you know, with our contractor and the insurance company, and things are, things are coming together, and we're getting, you know, getting it fixed and work, you know, with the insurance company and so forth, so getting taken care of, but they're still able to be open, they still have working toilets and sinks and such, so we're keeping it together. Then also, just want to make a comment about the budget, budget's coming together, coming together good, I mean, I'll warn you that things are a little more expensive this year than they were, you know, last year, so, I mean, we're doing the best we can to, to keep it reasonable, but everything from, you know, payroll and, and the purchasing of supplies is where we're really finding it, so, but also, so that we're gonna be presenting the budget to the board of selectmen and the budget committee on March second, and that meeting starts at the regular time of six P.M., so just something to look forward to.
Thank you, Adam, if you have any questions on anything else? Is that, okay.
Budget committee? Well, segment items, you're talking about, yeah. Budget committee, full, there are openings, how many people do we have?
Got one opening, don't we, because Robert, you got done?
Right.
Yeah. I think it was one, one opening of, I didn't...
Seven, seven?
Yeah.
The only thing, I know you was busy taking care of your dad, but the neighbors still stopped by and complained about that tree being in the brook.
Really?
Because, well, I knew probably you was busy, you didn't have a chance to talk to Jim, so.
I threw a whole bunch of stuff at him in a rapid fire, so I'll...
Yeah, that's okay.
Selectmen agents?
I did, um, roads, are, are we putting, is there a plan for us to put roads out, do over at this, in the summer? So, if I may?
Yep.
So my plan is, is that, that I'm gonna be presenting to you folks, is we're, we're waiting on the audit, and the audit, when that should be here, hopefully, at the next meeting, but when we get the audit, then that means we'll get our fund balance finals, and we'll be able to do our fund balance transfer. And with that being said, one of my recommendations in the capital plan is to put aside four hundred thousand dollars for, for some road improvements this year, specifically, I think it, I can't remember the two roads without looking, that we were gonna try and address first.
For the water and the, uh, Route sixty.
Yep, so that, that was the plan.
My point for bringing it up is that, really, as far as contractors go, you're, we're already late getting them out there, so.
Great.
Right now, we're probably, contractors are probably, for us to do roads, but now probably late summer and early fall, so my, my point being is that as soon as we can get those out there, and does, and forgive me, Rob?
Rob?
Does, I know he was working on the documentations for those two roads, I just wondered if we knew where, if he was, that was completely, or, because I'd really like, as, as soon as we know, get them out to bid, because if not, we're, I, it wouldn't be surprising that we get no contractors to...
So the, the challenge, the challenge that we have is that until we, until the board decides on the fund balance and that, that four hundred thousand dollars, we don't have here funding for that prod, those projects, so, and that's been held up, it's no, it's not, the auditors haven't been able to come, so that's kind of where we're, we're at. So, what I could do is preemptively, feeling as though, making a gander that the board's gonna be supportive of that, I can have those documents ready to go, and then if that's approved on the second fund balance transfer and such, then you guys could tell me to kick that off and...
Post it.
I think if you told Rob that you needed to have that ready now, that way it would be ready when it was time to go, because he's got basically all his estimates anyway, he just has to do updates.
He's just got to resubmit them again, because of the cost.
Yeah, and then he can get the bids ready to go out.
And if he can give us a copy of what he's planning to do on each road?
Right.
As far as, are we grinding, or are we adding, or what, what he's planning on doing?
I'll, yeah, I'll give you the, yeah, thank you.
Sure. Yes, Andrew, that group.
I'm gonna move to spending money today, because I wouldn't suffer with the budget.
Yeah.
That means hold on to your wallets.
No, it's the lowest it's been in twenty years, forty million, forty million. I swore somebody said ten billion the other night on TV, but no, that's, that's what going forward, this is a supplemental.
Still, I'm sorry, in talking about the roads, I guess, I did mention this to Adam, but I, I would like to see, and I'd like everybody's opinion on it, but riding by today, the rec building, with it being as warm as it was, there were a lot of cars parked all over the place to avoid the bad mud and the, I mean, the tire marks are really going in it, I think it's about time we look at getting an estimate to get that area paved. There's going to be a lot more activity there with the rec programs, and I really think that area needs to be paved, and I'd like to see an estimate on it, you said you're looking at spending money. But I, I really think it's, it's time for us to...
It'll be on the whole island, I think.
To get that area paved, and, you know, it's not gonna be cheap to do that, so.
How much is the rec budget? Not that much. You could probably resurface the front ramp.
But it, to me, it creates a cleanliness issue with all that being tracked into the building, everybody getting stuck in it, because it was pretty grooved out today, not only that, but I think it's safety, if you have cars spinning in that mud, so, anyway. Maybe you could have Rob take a look at that.
Give us an estimate?
And give us an estimate on that, too.
I, I...
Any other questions from the selectmen?
So, you talked about budget meeting March second, is the auditor gonna be here March second?
Oh, yeah.
Because I feel that if we don't have that, we're probably not prepared to go forward with the budget, it's gonna be very difficult to know what we're looking at spending in the next budget, without knowing what we're gonna be transferring to the undesigned fund, without knowing the money coming forward, and that's what we're waiting on the auditor for, correct?
Yes, I, I wholeheartedly agree, I mean, I think it's gonna have more effect on the capital expenses, and...
So, my, the only reason I say that is, is if something comes up and the auditor can't make it here, I don't wanna waste everybody's time unless you're fetal, that we, you know, there's work that we can do on March second with the budget, but bring the budget committee in without knowing those other numbers, to me, it, it would make it very difficult to go forward.
Well, so on March second, my intention is to do that initial, here's your budget books, and then just skew through everything at that thirty-thousand-foot view, no decisions, none of that kind of stuff, just a overview, and then we get into the meat and potatoes the following week, so, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that the auditor will be here.
You? No. Because we're gonna meet weekly after that first meeting, correct? Not every other. I'll be here, yeah, be careful.
And as far as that goes, too, the capital budget can be the last budget that we actually look at until waiting for numbers.
I think it would have to be, it's just, we're, so now we're talking, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, we're, I don't think it's gonna go very far on Number Six Road alone, that, that road is horrendous. I think we're fortunate that most of our roads in Oxford are pretty good, and I say that after traveling some roads in a neighboring town to the north, that their roads are awful, all in-town, out-of-town, terrible, I certainly don't wanna get to that point. Agreed. Just a question, if I remember correctly, about two years ago, or maybe a little more, we voted, we made a vote, any more than two million dollars coming from the casino, anything above the two million dollar mark, steps off at the capital improvement, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I think that happened right before I got here.
That was before, yeah.
Okay, but I remember we, we voted on that.
So I think since I've been here, we've been doing that by default anyway, because when we get the fund balance amount, then you guys are.
We put a lot of that aside.
Right, but I'm just saying, will you sit at two million, like, anything about that with the.
Okay, next item, number nine, sign warrants, sixty-four, five, six, and sixty-seven.
If you guys are waiting for an answer, you're already done.
I know, we're just, we're just hearing the rest of everything else. I got some interesting stuff for you. Actually, guys, I have a question for you guys. So as a, you know, for cannabis, I mean, I'm prepared to legally, there's all types of stuff that needs money, right? And we're looking to try to do, like, certain funds for community outreach, getting together with a bunch of other dispensary owners throughout the state. We'd like to kind of get funds going and spend money in certain areas, certain towns. How do we legally be able to live with that? You guys have any ideas? You know, because like, if we put it in a private fund, and then it was just someone not associated with us, could they put that towards the town, no issue? You know?
If we, I think if it involves federal funds, we're not able to do that. But if it's just.
Well, what if it's like, in town stuff, you got to be an extra sixty, seventy K for payment or something, you know what I mean?
No, but I'm just saying that if it involves federal funding, we can accept it.
Yeah, okay.
But if it doesn't, I think it's, you can check the volume, I think, because being asleep.
Yeah. But some of it is kind of, we can do, we need work, we need exploring.
So, I mean, I know that there are some local businesses that will make a donation to a specific program, like to keep Oxford, Oxford's warm account, you know, to help residents that need heating assistance, but don't meet the criteria for general assistance.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, look at something like that.
Stuff like that, you know?
Yeah, but we could talk about that more.
Yeah, I think we should.
Oh, can I give these to you?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to be signing the application. Do you need that?
Doing that application. Yeah, we are.
We're going to be signing.
Yeah, can you give her yours?
Yeah.
Asking you to.
Just wondering.
We need that form, that state form, I will not have it in the packet, so you're responsible to get it to me, I'll fill it out for you.
Okay, well, are they going to, are you sure Kingston has all that?
I will connect with Kingston, and if not, um.
Let me know, I'm five minutes down the road.
Yeah, I will let you know, everything else will be done by, hopefully in the morning, and I'll, I'll call you back.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, guys.
I think anything, licenses and things like that.
I'm ready now, guys. Appreciate it, guys, so.
Broke my ankle snowboard.
Oh, boy.
I bought a snowmobile, so I figured I wouldn't use it, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Take care, though.
Motion to adjourn.
Just to let you know, I won't be here the fourteenth through the twenty-first of March.
And I won't be here for the first meeting in March. I have to go back, I'm not for that whole week.
Thank you, the budget committee.
Yes.
Paul, you said the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Where are you going to have the meeting, or you have with the budget meeting?
I think it's going to be right here.
Yeah. We all get along.
It might be a little snug, I don't know.
Good to say.
I'll have to bring tables in, so they have places to sit.
Yeah, I think we can make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an excellent.
When are you, when are you going to help us?
So I've been talking to the contractor, and he, he's looking at the end of, towards the end of, excuse me, into March, trying to be here in order to do that, but he, we haven't nailed down the exact date, so if that happens, when we're getting, then we'll just like go over to the rec center or something like that, use that space, so. Kind of the deal was, if we were flexible with him, he'd get us this year, you know, this winter, so.
Well, that's good. Well, we can, just.